Anybody want a 10-minute break? Are you all right? Are you all right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'd like to call to order the City Council's work session agenda Monday, April 10, 2017. We are all present. On the first two items on the agenda, I would like to remind council, refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. 3.1, staff will provide the council with an update on the compensation and information from the recently completed compensation study. And Lyman Lockett, Human Resources Director, will lead. He's got the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be here this afternoon to provide some information on our compensation recommendations, including information on a recently completed compensation study. Joined here by Ruth Ann Elidge, and she's going to be providing information on the compensation study. She's from Seagull Waters, our consultant who conducted the study. Before we get to that, I'd like to just walk through a little bit of history as to where we're at today in delivering this information. As we look back in history, our last compensation study was completed back in 2008. It was a very comprehensive study that included the development of a compensation philosophy. Council adopted that compensation philosophy to maintain our market status at 100% of market. That also included the development of a new point factor system and two new pay structures, along with redoing all of our job descriptions. So it was a very comprehensive study. That was at a cost of $111,000. We came through that study and immediately, unfortunately, went into the economic downturn back in 2008. That economic downturn was marked by a four-year time period where we had minimal, if any, salary increases. In fact, the year that we did that compensation study, we did a 1% market adjustment, and the three following years, we did not give a salary increase at all. So that was 2010, 2011, and 2012. Also during that timeframe, we suspended a number of benefits for our employees to adjust to the economy at that time. Through that period, one of the good things about the compensation study that we did in 2008 is it laid the foundation for us to continue forward. So all of the things that were laid out in that compensation study, the new point factoring system, the new pay structures, the compensation philosophy, all of those things have laid the groundwork for us to continue moving forward. Each year thereafter, we do a survey with our 10 benchmark cities to look at our competitiveness in the market, and without that study, we would not be able to effectively do that. So it carries forward today. One of the things that we've noticed through those surveys and through that time period is that the market is moving. The market has changed, and it continues to change. Along with that, as we have emerged from the economic downturn, one of the factors that is considerable and noticeable is our turnover rate. Our turnover rate peaked at 13.14% in June of 2016. It has since come down to 10.23, still too high. Our goal is to be at 8.5. And in looking at turnover, we study this in two different ways. We do exit interviews, and we also do what we call retention and development interviews. And in each of those interviews, employees are telling us that the number-one reason they leave is for more money, and the number-two reason that they're, I should say, the number-one reason for our exit interviews is more money. The number-one reason for our retention and development interviews is leaving for better pay. That would be a trigger for someone to leave. So it's consistent in both, so we recognize that it is a factor in why people are either making the decision to leave or would make a decision to leave. We look at turnover also in two different ways, and we think it's twofold. We have had a renewed emphasis on dealing with low-performing employees, so we feel that some of our turnover is turnover that we're initiating because we are increasing standards, increasing expectations. And we also have the detrimental side of turnover, and that's losing top performers. So we recognize that we are losing some top performers in some situations, and that's the turnover that hurts. One of the things that's significant about this timeframe as well is we've been able to maintain our staffing levels per 1,000 residents. We've been above our valley benchmark cities, I should say, below the average. So I think that's something to be proud of, and I think it is something that our employees are telling us. We recently provided information on our employee survey, and there were only two areas in that survey that we were below our benchmark cities. And one was on benefits overall. So I think our employees are indicating that our benefits, there's need for enhancement. I will say that we have restored most of the benefits that we had suspended. There are a couple that are still left on the table, so we think we have addressed that. However, we still have a little bit of work to do there. The other area is what is a category of resources, materials, and equipment. And we went back out to our employees to understand what that was, and we're hearing loud and clear that our employees are feeling like they need a partner by their side, so the resource element of it. So I think through the economic downturn, I think what we're learning is that there are pressures that our employees have dealt with through that economic downturn, and as we emerge, we think we're addressing those areas, and part of our recommendation will be to address those areas going forward. One of the things that we did that was important as we emerged from the economic downturn is our initial focus. Our initial focus was on the two MOUs that we currently have and getting contracts in place. We accomplished that, and that impacted 34% of our organization. We maintained the spirit of our compensation philosophy by working to get our sworn public safety personnel to 100% of market. So that was a central part of that MOU. Our recommendations today are going to be focused on the other employees in the organization, our non-sworn employees. There is also a focus on our command staff in our public safety, who are not covered by the MOU, and that's 66% of our organization. So the recommendations today will have great impact. Often when we look at this 66% of the organization, sometimes when things are running well, we kind of take those things for granted, but they are equally as important as our public safety in terms of delivering clean and safe water to our citizens, maintaining and repairing and building roads, traffic lights, and other important infrastructure, landscape maintenance in our parks and right-of-ways, safety inspections of our park equipment. The list goes on and on. I could spend all day talking about those things, and I don't want to forget anybody, but there's a whole host of people that support the quality of life and sense of community within the city of Goodyear. One thing that I think is important as we talk about this, and I'm getting ready to turn things over to Ruth Ann to give you information on the compensation study, I think that goes back to that market, excuse me, to the compensation philosophy. And I think it's important. Many organizations fail to establish a compensation philosophy. I applaud council for doing that because it gives us guidance in how we move forward with compensation. Our compensation philosophy provides the vehicle for us to both attract and retain high-quality employees that can deliver the quality of services we want to our citizens. Staying at 100% of market provides us the opportunity to, I think, stand behind what we consider to be competitive wages. So there are two pieces to our recommendation today. One will be the component of the compensation study that Ruth Ann will talk about. I'll come back at the end and talk about an annual salary increase. They are two different components, and two different components that are both necessary to keep us at market. So with that said, I'm going to turn things over to Ruth Ann. I'll come back to it.
It's my pleasure to be here today. My name is Ruth Ann Elidge. I'm with the Seagull Waters Company. And I hate to date myself, but I was actually involved in the 2008 study. So I've been doing consulting work now since early 2000, and appreciate the opportunity to come back and see where you are and conduct this market update. So what I would like to do is walk you through what we have done, what our methodology was, and answer any questions that you might have about the work that has just been completed. The key work, okay, just that one went out. The key work steps, I said I was looking at that one, and I thought I had gone in. The key work steps included looking at market data for about 30% of jobs. When you do a market update, standard compensation practice is to look at at least one out of every four or five jobs, because you can typically benchmark off of those positions to understand the relationship of your positions with market. In this particular study, we looked at one of every three positions, which is a very strong representation of the workforce. There were 62 job titles that were included in the market update. Initially, we had, I think, 56 jobs. We were asked to do an analysis of the original benchmark positions to determine if that was sufficient for the study. And what we do in that analysis is look at the representation across departments, across levels, exempt, non-exempt, and so forth, to make sure you have a good foundation that represents the entire workforce. So that was part of the study. We were also asked to look at your comparable employers. We typically have criteria, and I'll talk about that in a few moments, that we use to identify comparable employers. And so we did look at those as well. As we gather the market data and completed the analysis, determined where you are in relationship to market, one of our approaches is to look at your structures as a whole to see how they are aligned with your overall compensation philosophy, and then look at individual positions, because, as you can imagine, in the marketplace, not every job moves at the same pace. Some jobs move a little bit differently than others, and so we want to look at the entire structure and then look at individual jobs that may have really become out of alignment with your market policy. And so we do have some recommendations for individual positions to be moved to other grades to put their market value more closely to the midpoint of their pay range. We've recommended some modifications to the overall structure and have provided some implementation costing scenario for you, so you can understand the cost impact of what we found. So those are all the key work steps and deliverables. I'll talk about each phase just very briefly, and then we'll get to questions and answers. The first question, of course, was your benchmark jobs. Were they sufficient to represent your workforce? And so after our analysis, we found that really adding another six positions would really help you have a better representation. Some of them were public works positions, water, some of them were, you know, professional positions, and a couple of them were the technical support or your skilled craft folks. So we were able to add six more jobs, and we feel like that, based on our analysis, really did round out that full representation of your workforce. We then looked at the comparable employers and found that the criteria that we have continuously used to look at whether or not they are appropriate for your compensation, your market definition, was do these employers all have similar types of positions? Because you want to survey employers that have similar types of jobs, similar types of services, who your labor pool is, which is based on proximity, and then services provided, and other criteria such as historical benchmarks. Because once you set a standard, you want to more or less keep with that same standard so you can develop trend lines and determine if things have really changed significantly. And as a result of our review and analysis, we think that the 10 benchmark employers that you're currently using satisfies that criteria. And these were those 10 employers. So the combination of all of these meet those criteria of providing similar services, having similar types of jobs for comparability of positions, proximity, and similar services So the methodology to conduct the study has been to gather information on range, minimums, midpoints, and maximums. Everything has been adjusted, and what I mean by that is we aged it forward to July 1 of 2017 so that it will be effective as of that date, so you'll be in a good market position upon implementation. Part of our analysis included a standard deviation analysis. Not all of our clients use this, but in this particular case, historically, y'all have done that, and so we ran that analysis, and there were a few positions that we pulled out of the comparison, a few individual benchmark jobs that we pulled out using that. As well as our, we thoroughly vet positions by pulling job descriptions from those respondents, looking at their org charts. You know, just because someone responds to a survey and says, "This is our match," we do what we call the verification of those matches to make sure that we're comfortable that they are indeed an apples-to-apples comparisons for your positions. We look at the market data to determine overall where your structure is in relation to market, and that is done by looking at the average market value compared to your average midpoint, because midpoint is your market comparable position of your pay ranges. And then we look at individual positions and where they are outside of that plus or minus 5%, because our recommendation, you'll see in a few moments, is to adjust your entire structures by a percentage amount, and then move some individual positions that have continued to lag after that adjustment. So you can see in our summary of findings that overall, your pay structures are lagging market by approximately 3%. I'm looking at the midpoint relationship, but at 96% at minimum, 97 at midpoint, and 97 at maximum. We then split it up into two groups of exempt and non-exempt, because you have two structures, two sets of ranges, one for exempt and one for non-exempt, and found that your exempt continued to be at 97% of market. Your non-exempt, these are your frontline employees who are providing your day-to-day services, your skilled trades, your customer service reps, all those folks that, and I'm not picking out any individual position, but those types of jobs are the ones that you see in your non-exempt group, they're your hourly employees, and they had, they lagged even further behind. So, and this is, this is just base pay. This study was not included, did not include benefits, so we're just looking at your base pay and pay structures. This does not include your public safety command staff. We looked at them separately, and you'll see on the next slide that we found that your police and fire command staff are also lagging market, and even more so than your non-public safety, your non-sworn folks. And you can see, we do an analysis for public safety on a rank-by-rank basis. So for your command staff, you can see battalion chief and deputy fire chief, again, 10% or more behind market. Deputy chief of police, 10 or so or more. Your police lieutenant was okay, but it still was lagging like the others. So you've got some catching up to do in these positions as well. So as a result, what we are recommending is that your general exempt structure be adjusted by 3%, and we actually added a grade to it so that we can actually move some positions up to a higher level to put them in a more market competitive position. We did the same for the non-exempt, except it's a 4% adjustment, the entire structure, again, adding another grade, another level of pay range in that structure. Public safety, we looked at each command staff level, and this is fairly standard in looking at public safety positions. You generally look at a rank by rank by rank, because you want to keep each rank competitive at both entry and maximum. And at each one of those, we felt like there were steps at the minimum, this is a step structure, steps at the minimum that needed to be eliminated because they were really lagging market, and you could probably understand that based on the analysis you saw. And then we added some steps at the top of them, and it varied by rank. So some had two steps added, some have had four steps added. At the entries, some may have had three or four steps dropped off, another one, four or five. So it varied again by individual rank. And once that has been done in our recommendation, that has basically kind of righted the ship in terms of your overall pay structure, then our next recommendation was there's about 20 positions that were still way outside of that plus or minus 5% of market value. And so we recommended those jobs be realigned or regraded to a higher level so that they are in a more market competitive range of pay.
Good to wait. No questions?
Okay. You should write it down. So as a result, three of those employees and some of those positions that have been realigned, their current pay is below entry, and so we're going to recommend that their pay be brought up to entry. And then, of course, with the public safety command staff, that their salaries be adjusted to bring them to a step that's more aligned with where they need to be in relation to market, and to, that will actually alleviate a lot of pay compression among those positions. So overall, the recommendation is to shift all the employees with their relative structure. So those that are exempt employees would receive a 3% adjustment as that structure shifts, and then for the non-exempt employees, a 4% adjustment as that structure shifts. And then even after that adjustment has occurred, there would be three employees who were realigned, their grades were realigned, and they were below entry, and so those would be brought up to the entry of their new range. And all of that has a total value of about $755,000. So I've run through that fairly quickly for the non-public safety. You can see on the last slide here the actual cost for the public safety adjustments for your command staff. And it's, it affects a total of 18 folks, sworn command staff, for a total value of about $190,000 or so thousand. So I'm going to stop here, and I've run through this fairly quickly and see what kind of questions you might have.
Thank you so much. So council, who would like to be first? Councilwoman Stip?
Excuse me. Would you please go back to the last slide?
This one?
Is that $190,000 rough number included in the previous slide?
It is not.
So the previous slide, which was $755,000?
Correct.
Is for the non-public safety folks?
Correct.
And then the $190,000 is for the public safety?
Public safety, command staff.
Just the command staff, the $190,000?
Add them together.
Got to add them together? The 82 and the 107 comes to, yeah, comes $190,000. So we're talking just under a million?
Yeah.
Something like that? Okay. Does this, and I hesitate to use the word correct, but does this get the compression issue that we have in public safety corrected?
For the most part.
Oh, gosh.
And when I say that, you'll never correct compression totally, because when you're moving a structure, you have to keep certain relationships among internal staff. But I think this, I think the short answer really is yes, but I don't think there's anything else that you can do beyond this to resolve it, that I'm aware.
Without, and I've been struggling with trying to figure out how to say this without sounding offensive to the previous studies and anyone on staff, but we have known on the public safety side about this compression issue for, at least since the creation of the rank of battalion chief in the fire department, which I think was about the same time the rank of lieutenant was created in the police department back in the early 2000s. And we identified at that very moment that we were going to have a compression issue, and it has taken us almost 15 years to get to the point where we're finally fixing it. And I realize that the number is large when you look at $190,000 on top of whatever raises are out there, but it is, it's critical that we fix this once and for all. A number of years ago, just before I got on council in 2010, I think we took another stab at adjusting. Lyman, if you can help me with the, is that about right, 2010?
Yeah, 2008, I believe.
Well, eight was the study, and then?
2012, when we compressed the ranges, number of ranges.
Okay. So it was in '12 that we made our last attempt at fixing this. So, yeah, and that was five years ago. So for, you know, just to kind of refresh everyone's memory, because pretty much everybody was around for the most part, except for, obviously, Sherilyn. For those two that are going to be here in Jan, January, in June to vote on it, we have a long history with this, and for anybody who's listening, I think it, we finally get to a point where we get to fix this. So I'm hopeful that we're finally there. The other comment unrelated to that that I wanted to make is on the, we use the term benchmark city. And when we use the term benchmark, when we talk about performance benchmarks, those are the people in which we measure ourselves against. When we're talking about it in compensation classification, those are the communities in which we compete against. So they're not really benchmarks. We're not striving to be just like them. We are competing against them. So I think using the term benchmark is not really accurate, because those are the folks that we're competing against. So if we want to stay competitive in the market, that's the ones that we're competing against, and we constantly get criticized for why are we comparing ourselves to Scottsdale? Why are we comparing ourselves to Phoenix? And we're not comparing ourselves. We're not benchmarking ourselves against them. But those are the folks that we are competing for, for the talent resources that we have. And I think that that's really important for anyone who's listening to understand that it's not a, that's not a benchmark. That's a competitor, and there's a huge difference with that. And I really, in the future, would love to see us separate those two words, because as we'll find out later, words actually mean something. So, thanks.
I think sometimes it's an easy explanation for the citizens when they use the word benchmark. It's used throughout the industry, and so I think that's, gives an easy feeling. Ice Mair?
First of all, Lyman, when you started out, you said something about why we're losing people, which kind of made me think about when we've been talking about this. When they're going for more pay, are they also going for more responsibility somewhere else? Is there something that else we don't have in that job because they're getting paid more, but they might be moving up the food ladder, you know, to somewhere that we don't have a position? Is that, do we know how many are going for like a better, I want to say, a better career enhancement?
That advancement potential is number three when we do our retention interviews. So from a trigger perspective, the opportunity for advancement would be the third highest-rated cause. And as it relates to exit interviews, a better job opportunity with another employer is number two. So those are factors as well, highly rated factors.
I guess I agree with Bill and everything he said, because what struck me was, I think it was the 2010 or 2012 that you brought those surveys up there that had those lines. And even after all the work we did, and those might be good to kind of go back and look to see where we are, because I thought that was a very good visual, that even with trying to fix the compression, we were still under the line. I don't know how we fix this, and I'm not sure if this does. Are we moving people up from one step? Like if we get rid of the bottom step, and I have four years' experience, then do I get to move to step four, the new step four from the old step four? How is this going to work to actually move people to where they should be in their career path, you know, not just getting rid of a step and adding steps?
The, so we're looking at both equity and compression. So as we move people, we want to ensure that we address any compression issues, but we also want to equitably move people so that we don't create a new problem. So they will essentially move at the same pace unless we have reason to address a compression issue. And there is one issue from a compression perspective that we're looking to address.
And we're going to look at people individually to see how like they are in their career path and their career?
Yes. We're talking our sworn command staff.
Okay.
Yes.
Because my concern is, you know, with any position, you don't want to come to work and people and people talk and know that you might be making less than the person that just started there two years after you did. I mean, that's kind of not a good work atmosphere, and then you might go look somewhere else. So I guess that's my concern, is that we make sure that when we are getting rid of those steps at the bottom and adding them to the top, that we're not just leaving people where they're at, we're somehow moving them sufficiently to get to where they need to be for their years of service and, you know, their appropriate position. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
And then my other question, my last question, and then I'll be done for a while, is on the benefits. That might have to be another discussion that we have again, what benefits we have for not just sworn, for uns sworn, for example. What are we doing? What can we do? What is something new that might be out there that we're not doing, a new partnership or something? What can we do to assist our employees to retain? Because I think something else you've got to keep in mind is that when people quit and they go somewhere else, you got, it costs money to hire. And I think that's, a lot of people don't realize how much it costs to hire and train in that learning curve in a new environment, and I'd rather not lose people than have to keep retraining people. So I'll pass it on, and then if I think of something else.
Your councilman Osborne?
Thank you. So it's funny, when I saw you, and I was like, oh, she looks familiar, because I was here in 2008. And then when you spoke, I heard your accent, I'm like, oh, yeah, that's got to be her. And, you know, it's interesting, from where we were back then, when you did that study, and we were having those conversations at that time of, we, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, we wanted to be at like 101 or 103%.
Yes, we did.
We were above the 100% threshold. We were looking for, we wanted, you know, that was, that was the, and of course, that was before the recession was hitting us, we didn't realize what we were doing. But as you're looking at these positions that you were saying, one and three, I'm wondering if you dug in deep to areas of longevity, because in a way, it's absolutely incredible to have wonderful employees that have been with us 15, 20 years, and they're outstanding people. But at the same time, when they've been in that position for so long, and no one's come in to take their place, we don't realize where that new person's coming in, and could be a, you know, $8 an hour difference in pay. And so that's why I'm asking, if you got deep down into, and not to pick on anybody that's retiring, I know this month, but some of them have been there a long time. And so if you're not looking at some of those key positions that have been with us for a very long time, we may be surprised as to what maybe their pay is. So was longevity at all something that you looked at?
So in this study, we're looking at your pay structure, and we're not evaluating employee pay per se. So for example, is your maximum where your more tenured employees are, is that at the right level? Is your entry at the right level, where you should be hiring in people that have limited or little experience beyond what the minimum qualifications are? Or is your midpoint where you should have employees have progressed to, that is the mark? So that's the focus of the study. So we were fairly agnostic about how long someone had been doing something. We were just trying to make sure that regardless of an employee's time and position or experience, did we have the right pay opportunity for that position?
Okay.
Does that help?
I think I know what you're saying. I think I get that. The other item that I just had, that I was thinking about, back to the benefit side, you know, when we went that three and four years of, you know, being very stale in what we could do, the creativity bug came to play, as to how do we recognize our employees? How do we give them the stars? How do we, cupcake of the day, whatever it is? You know, we were out there searching for those ways for recognition. And I wonder if, because I don't know, if some of those things have gone by the wayside because now pay has come back into the picture. And so are some of the things that really give employees that feel good attention, and just in other avenues, I think those are the things that, you know, back to what Vice Mayor Lortano said, let's look at, you know, what are the things that are important to them? And are some of those programs that we had gone away? I'd be curious. That was all. Thanks.
Joe? Councilmember Pizzillo?
Whatever. Either way, it'll work. Resources, we're in the health and safety business, and I always look at it this way from a resource standpoint. And again, turnover, you know, as I mentioned before, is always an important issue, because institutional knowledge is real important, and we want to keep the best and the brightest. Why? Because if we make errors out there, either in the water, the sanitation, police, fire, or even on our streets, if they're not maintained correctly, we have major risk. So to me, being very competitive and getting the best and the brightest is a good business investment upfront, because it takes money to make money, and if you've got the right people in place, you mitigate those potential issues down the road. So the fact that we're working to bring those up, I think, is very, very important from a business standpoint, to mitigate any of those future. So anything we can do to keep the best and the brightest here, as opposed to the turnover, that I think is a noble effort that we need to move into. So competitive, I agree with Councilmember Stipp. I think that's the focus that we need to kind of go on, as far as opposed to benchmarks. The second thing is, and I think you covered it, but I just want to make sure. I know we've had issues with, I think it's the battalion chiefs and the lieutenants and a variety of other things, because at a certain level, because of labor law, there's overtime involved, and when you get to a certain level, you're considered management. So there's those incentives, why do I want to go to management and give up all my overtime? And as a result, I may discourage from taking that promotion because it actually costs me money, but it stifles those in positions in management that we need as we get up the line. Has that been addressed in this? And I thought I heard yes, but I just want to make sure.
So let me say, that's why I said for the most part.
Okay.
Because if you have an overtime eligible employee, working lots and lots of overtime, and, you know, overtime can vary from one year to the next. So you're trying to, you're trying to put that differential there that will generally be an incentive to encourage that first, that lower level to promote, and knowing that they're losing that overtime. So we have really tried to address that with this. So we think we have a good solution for you.
One other thing there, Mayor. As a result, when we came out of that great recession, we were well above, I think around nine at the tops, somewhere around there per thousand. As a direct result of our volunteers, one of them, and our staff, they're doing more than less out there right now. We're in the sevens, I believe. So they, the ones that are still here and hanging in there, they're working harder, they're getting more done, and based on our surveys, they're still coming back and saying that our citizens, we're meeting the needs that they're asking. And I want to make sure we keep that trend going and not end up burning them out, and we keep the best and the brightest as that kind of goes forward. So again, I think it's important, since they haven't had anything reviewed over these long periods of time, that we try to bring them up to speed, because based even on the surveys we have, we get excellent surveys as far as the quality of level of service they're providing out there. And this is kind of a way to try to take care of, at least to make them competitive out there, you know, what's going on. And again, I can't emphasize enough the health and safety. I'd rather invest a little money upfront to make sure we got the best and the brightest, than to run the risk down the road of getting a major lawsuit, because we didn't hire the best and the brightest, and we were at a disadvantage, and we're, and that's the reason why we're doing that. So I'm pleased over the last several years, knock on wood, we have not had those issues. We've kind of hopefully stabilized some of those. But when you look at everything we do, whether it's making sure the roads are safe, or make sure you've got the public safety with the fire and police, all directly impacts our citizens from a health standpoint. And from a local standpoint, we're the ones that impact their day-to-day lives. So it's important we make sure we get it safely, and we do it right, make sure we've got the best doing it. So again, I appreciate this effort. Yeah, I know. One other thing to add, I think what Joanne, or Councilmember Osborne, and the Vice Mayor was asking about, would be nice to get a list of all of those benefits that we're giving up from the non-sworn as a result of the recession that they gave up, and see what's left on the table. And it may be, I don't know if it'll be this term or not, but at some point, it would be nice to try to revisit, because that's been, that was reduced back in '08, '07, somewhere around there, when those benefits were cut. And I know some of them have been reinstituted, but I know some of them have not. So it would be nice to kind of get a list of those at some point.
Yes, my microphone wasn't turned on. Councilmember Pizzillo, that was in 2008 where we started to suspend benefits. We have returned several, and we'll get the list to council so you can see what has been reinstated, and then what is still suspended.
Councilman Campbell?
Well, I have several questions, and I'd like to first direct it to the city manager. The roughly $940,000 we're talking about, which takes care of this correction, is that being proposed for this upcoming budget? Or is it going to be phased in? Or how are you going to handle that if we decide this is what we want to do?
Great question. Councilmember Campbell, it is in the, it will be in the proposed draft budget, depending on direction tonight, but it already is being factored in there. And there will be another part of this that the HR director will talk about. What is being talked about right now gets us back up to market but does not keep us there, so there'll be another component, talked about this in just a few minutes, and all of that is factored into our proposed draft budget at this point.
So the $940,000 that we're talking about right now will be in the '18 budget?
It will be in the-
And then there'll be more coming?
It will be in the fiscal '18 budget, subject to council appropriation.
Okay. One of my questions was, what were the benefits that were left on the table, and could we get a list of what we took away and what we restored, and what we're talking about now? It's very important for our, especially public safety, to have succession planning. And sometimes it will take bringing in someone in a comparable position from another city, and we have to be competitive if we're going to be able to bring those folks on board. So I'm really in favor of us straightening this out. I don't know that we'll ever get it straightened out. I looked real quick at the populations of the cities we're being compared with, and only Buckeye and Avondale are anywhere near our population. And I only say that because all of these other cities are so much bigger, they have huge amounts of money, bigger budgets than we do, I would assume. So they're able to really pay the high dollars all the time, and I'm not sure we're ever going to be able to, we might be able to catch up with them, but we're not going to be able to sustain it, I don't think. And I'm assuming you're going to come back every year and tell us-
Where is your confidence in the city? Come on.
-to come in, and we're going to have to up it even more? And because the comment of, we're hiring folks below entry level, how did that happen? I mean, how did we, I mean, what happened that we would even do that to begin with?
So this, these individuals that are below entry are because we moved them up to a higher grade, and so their current salary was within the range they were in, but now that we've moved them up to a higher grade, they, their salary has fallen below entry. So that's why it's important to correct that as you move them to a higher grade, so they are at entry or above, but we're placing them at entry. So they were not hired below entry, they-
They were in it and then moved up. When I worked for the government, and I was a GS7, I was promoted to a GS8, and I got the GS8 money. I didn't have to do anything. I mean-
That's what we're proposing here.
Are we changing their titles?
No, we're just saying that market says they should be at a higher grade.
All right. So then that would be higher entry level from that day forward for that position?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And my next question, and no one has said anything about it, and I'm very interested in it, are we doing anything for tuition assistance for our employees? Are we upping that amount for them? Because we've got a lot of folks that go to school. I mean, that's a perk for our folks, and I know they appreciate it, because it's hard for them to work full-time and go, most of them are doing studies online. And I just want us to be able to recognize that and help them, because it's to our benefit.
Councilmember Campbell, that was one of the ones that we restored last year. So we made some changes in the prior year, and we moved up to $4,500 maximum annual.
Right. Well, it was $4,500 then. Are you doing anything to up it anymore?
At this point, it's not on the table, but if council so desires, it certainly is something that we could look at.
I was going to say, just looking at online, $4,500 does help? Doesn't make a dent when you're, you know, going for your degree online, but it's helpful. But I just wonder, because I don't know what the other cities are doing, although I am now on a task force that will be looking into that, and I'm going to ask those questions, because I don't know how much the other cities give their employees, but I do know that it's really important for our employees to have that. And my last question is, and I don't have to know that tonight, can you please tell me what the 20 lagging jobs were, what the job titles were, that you kept referring to as 20 different jobs were lagging? I'd like to know what the job titles are and where they're located, in what department?
We can get that too.
Sure. Thank you. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, you have another question?
I have another question, actually, brought up with what Wally just said. So when we have someone who moves from like a position one to a position two into a different pay grade, do they go into, if they're below that, to the starting of that one? Like if I'm in the step three of the position one, and I get bumped up to a position two, do I then go up to the equivalent step? Or how does that work? Or if it's equivalent, do I get like a 5% bump for the promotion? How does that work?
I'm not real clear about your current procedure, so I'm going to let-
I guess that's Lyman.
Councilmember Lortano, if you're in the new range, you're going to be slotted at your current salary in the new range. If you're below the new entry point, you'll be moved to the new entry point.
Okay. So, but do you, if you get bumped up, do you get, if you're in the same range, do you get any sort of monetary increase for getting the promotion? If it's in the same range?
For the purpose of regrading these jobs?
Can I ask you that? So if the responsibilities of the job increases?
Yeah.
That's what you're missing in that statement. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I haven't been able to say a word. But, so if it does that, because it seems to me, I remember something coming through us at one time, talking about that, if you would promote somebody into a more stringent job.
For promotional purposes, absolutely, yes. For promotional purposes, yes. For the purposes of regrading these positions, the individuals are going to be slotted. So there are two different processes there. One is a promotion, which, yes, there would be a promotional increase associated with the promotion.
And if you're slotted, like we looked at some here that are 88%, so if I'm slotted and you're moving me up, is that individual that's at 88% of market, are we going to bring that person X, who's 88%, are we going to then bring him up, or her up to 100% of market, so that they're where they should be?
They would be receiving a market adjustment. So the market adjustment is focused on getting them paid commensurate with where they should be at from a market standpoint. So it would either be the 3% or the 4% that you talked about, depending upon whether they're exempt or non-exempt.
So that would bring them up from over the 88 or 89% to 100% of market, whatever's needed to bring them up there?
So there's two different components there. So you're talking about the range, so their range would be moving to 100% of market. That's our goal, is to get the range at 100% of market. Where they fall within that range is an individual, really individual to the, or it's specific to the individual. So where they fall within the range is going to be based on where they're currently at. So the range will move 3% or 4%, and they would move 3% or 4% as well, if that makes sense, as an individual.
It doesn't make sense to me.
It doesn't make sense, because let's just use, I pulled it up, the battalion tree. I'm at 88% of market. We want to get everyone up to 100% of market. So however we move the steps or everything, shouldn't we make sure that the person listed here at 88% is now at 100%?
And the way you move within the range has a lot to do with your experience. So someone who is more tenured, who has more experience, is going to be further along the range than someone who is less tenured and less experienced. So they'll both be moving within the range, but they'll be at different places within the range. The goal is to ensure that the range is appropriate for that position. So we want our range at 100% of market. The individuals within the range are going to be moving at their own pace, based upon their experience.
I guess I still don't get it, because even the minimum, we've got this person at 88% of the minimum, so at some point, shouldn't we make sure that that person is at the market? That's what I kind of, maybe I need your lines again. The one with the battalion chiefs, it's slide 11.
On your command staff?
Command staff.
Different adjustments?
I guess I'm thinking of it different, maybe.
So for each one of these individual ranks, we are looking at them individually. But when you look at the overall pay structure for the non-public safety, that is what Lyman was talking about, was- was talking about, was you've got employees that are in varying locations within that range. But for the command staff, we are looking at them individually at each rank and putting them at the right slot within that rank.
So that 88% will get up to market. Right now, we're significantly below market?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question, because I don't want to say if we move 3%, then we're still not, we're at 91, we're still 10% under market. Okay.
The public safety have the benefit of having their individual ranks looked at specifically. The non-public safety, you're looking at a range of pay in all the jobs that are in that range of pay. So it's a little bit different analysis, but the end result is positions are put into ranges that are all within that 100% of market average. Does that answer the question?
I think it does, but I think if we get some more charts before the next one that kind of lay out, like kind of a little more comparison, that would help me better, honestly. You know, I think just to show how it all fits in. Right now, it just seems like it's rather low out there, an outlier, so.
Any other? Bill? Mr. Councilman Stiff?
I'm doing both tonight.
I'm kind of all over the place, so I've got two. I want to go back to what was talked about earlier. I guess I'm concerned that we're focusing on the pay scale as the resolution point to the turnover issue. And I don't know that that is, it's a factor. I don't think it is the factor. And the way that it's been presented tonight is it's the factor. And so I don't think we should be losing sight of that. And as a council, I don't think we should ever lose sight of the fact of why our turnover rate is in double digits. So while we're taking care of the pay, we can't pretend for a moment that this is going to solve all of our turnover issues. So I hope we don't-
The cupcake.
Correct. Collectively, I hope we don't take that away from that.
The last thing I was going to talk about, because as people are listening to this, and they're not in the council meeting, and they're listening to raises and they're comparing themselves to their positions and what raises they do not get a yearly or not guaranteed a yearly, and so they hear this conversation going. So I'd just like the city manager to put a little bit of information in on our, and you have certain names, but from my terms, that we require a certain performance from our employees. And that is, that is regulated and checked, and so we have goals for our employees. And there are some people that leave us that don't quite meet the criteria or those goals for the departments or their job. So I just, just kind of, you know, how we nurture and we teach and that you, there are certain requirements, because it just sounds like the government just, every year says, no matter what, everybody needs a raise, and that's what we're going to do. And we want them to know what the quality of people we have working for them, because of the background in which we make sure that the directors and so forth, that performance is where it should be. So, mind addressing that?
Mayor, I can answer it a couple of ways. We do require all employees to go through a performance plan, if you will. So all employees know what's expected to them. They go through a job evaluation each year. We do it mid-year. And then we also do it the end of the, in December, at the end of the calendar year. And the purpose of that is so our employees know how they're performing, there aren't surprises at the end of the year, those types of things. If an employee is not performing, they're not subject to a merit increase. And I would like to also point out, there's a second part of the presentation, and it might be a good place for us to go ahead and finish that if council's okay, and we come back to these questions pertinent to the compensation study. But we do have an additional portion to this to keep us at market as well, so didn't want that to get lost.
Thank you for your input. Councilman Stiff?
Okay. My last question, though, is regarding what we've talked about so far. And so far, the emphasis has been on the sworn personnel. And for years, we've been, we've fought this battle about taking care of the folks that we have MOUs with, and then it's all about the sworn. And then we have this huge segment of non-sworn employees in the city that it seems in the presentations get overlooked. Now, I know you've done an analysis, and you did not share with us what positions were looked at in the non-sworn area. And I think that's important for us to know, is what positions did we look at? How did we go about that? We're spending a great deal of time talking about sworn people, but I want to talk about the other 250 employees, or whatever that number is, that are not sworn, and where do they fall into this situation? Because it sounds like they're just flat X percent, and that's it. So have we done a detailed analysis of them?
Yeah, the focus of this study was on non-sworn, and it also included the command staff. So by and large, the positions that were looked at were non-sworn. Of those 50, of the 62, the vast majority would be, are non-sworn.
Okay. So can we get a list of the 62 positions then? I think we ought to know. Did we, did we look at the 62 top? Did we look at the 62 bottom? You know, did we have a good, I mean, can you tell me that? Did we at least have a good spread? Did we look at all the directors? Because I know we've looked at the deputy city managers and the police and fire chief, but did we look at any of the other directors?
We did.
Okay.
In fact, that was that analysis that was completed early on to make sure that those 62 positions did represent all levels within the city, as well as all departments and all career families. So it was a, it was a statistical analysis that looked at your representation of employees, your representation of positions within departments, your representation in exempt and non-exempt, and your representation within the pay schedules, to statistically make sure you had jobs that represented those levels.
Okay. But we'll get a list of what those positions were?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Okay, you satisfied overall, but you'll get a list, right?
Good.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Back up here real quick. The next portion of the presentation has to do with the other components. As I mentioned earlier, there's two components to ensure that we stay at market. There is the compensation study component that Ruth Ann just completed, which gets us to market. And then once we're at market, one thing that we know is it is dynamic, and the rest of our competitive cities will be moving. And this is historically where they've moved. And if you look at the bottom bars there, you can see how we've kept up or not kept up with these cities. Back in 2015, we had some opportunities. About 50% of those cities were higher than we were. And at that point in time, we gave a 2.5% average increase. The next year in '16, we stepped it up to 3%, made a little bit of headway, but 40% of our cities were similar to us, with 30% being higher. And then in '17, I think we had a better representation of where we were at, at a 3.5% increase in comparison to our benchmark cities, or our competitive cities. One of the things that we've spent time doing is assessing where our benchmark cities are going to be for this next year, and that guides us in our recommendation for salary increase moving forward. And what we are recommending is a salary increase of 0% to 3% at a cost, could I get So at a cost of, the first portion there is the cost of the 755,000, which was the cost of the structure change that Ruth Ann just went over. The second portion there would be an increase of 680,882, which would be the cost of a 0% to 3% increase for our non-sworn personnel. This would keep us in line with market. We think that it is favorable, based on the information that we've been able to collect from our competitive cities and where we see them going. And if I could have the presentation back? So, of course, the other portion of that, which is already included in the Siegel Waters, would be our sworn command staff. Along with this would be lump sum increases for employees who are at maximum of the range. And that would be a 2.5% lump sum increase for those individuals. And then this just recaps information on our sworn personnel. This is what has been agreed to in the MOU for sworn fire. This year, we have a market adjustment of 3% and then an average increase of 5%. For police, we have a market adjustment of 5% and an average increase of 5.27%. And then our lump sum, again, for our sworn personnel would be 2.5%. I'll also remind you that we do have a revenue trigger. One of the things that we had talked about, I believe Councilmember Lortano brought up, the grids that we showed. This was our opportunity to potentially catch up if we were behind. So this will not be determined until later this year, November of 2017. We'll do an assessment to see where we stand and whether or not we've met the revenue trigger requirements for that portion of it. So again, there is two components. There would be this component, along with the market increase adjustment.
Thank you. Questions? Councilman Campbell?
How many are at max range?
Total throughout the organization. I don't have that answer for you, but we could get that.
Get it for us. That would be good. And my next question, or not next question, is if we do the, this is going to be to the city manager. If we agree to this, what are we giving up? Where are we finding an additional? Oops, it's not up. Well, I forgot to, I forgot what he has, and I don't have it here. The other was 940 million.
Thousand.
I mean, 940,000, sorry. Excuse me.
Thank you. Pirate's director fainted back there.
I'm picking too many zeros. 940,000 plus whatever the 3% he just said. And I think the total is going to be 23 million, wasn't it?
Well, Councilmember Campbell, we're looking at, and we'll have all of this in front of you next Monday, as we propose a balanced draft budget. But the personnel side of it is about an additional $1.8 million or thereabouts for everything. That includes MOUs, that includes a market adjustment that was talked about, and also merit increases.
So it's a 1.8 million increase. So obviously, you're going to find the 1.8 million somewhere, are you not?
It's already, it's already contemplated in the budget that we'll be bringing you, the draft proposed budget this coming Monday.
Okay. And are we giving up anything big to do this?
We are, there are a lot of things that are under consideration. As we've had work sessions with council, there are some that have come back, that council's asked that we include back into the budget. We'll have a few other items for consideration as well. You will see all those, any changes that we think that we've heard from council, as well as any others that have come up. You will see all those adjustments from what we've done since March 20th.
Okay. And Lyman, did I understand you correctly when you said the range would be 0% to 3%? So who's the zero? Are those the max out people? No, it can't be. You just said the max out get 2.5.
Yeah, there is a performance element associated with this. So the zero would be those that did not meet performance standards.
The nonperformers?
Yes.
And if they perform a little bit, they might get 1%? Or if they do a whole bunch, they get-
They need to have a meets expectation evaluation to be eligible for salary increase. Those that do not-
That's why I asked the question, I did.
Those that do not would not receive a salary increase.
And who makes that determination? Their supervisor?
Their supervisor, through the evaluation system that Brian spoke to earlier.
All right. Now, let me ask you this, and I hope this question isn't out of bounds, but does the employee have the right to go to a higher authority if they were to appeal?
Yes, we do have a grievance and appeal process that employees have.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, Bill, you have to ask the question. You always do.
Okay. So we are completed.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much for coming and, Ruth Ann, thank you. It's nice to see you and appreciate you being here.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, thank you very much, Lyman, for the presentation. All right. We have 15 minutes-
Oh, good.
Before, no, we don't have 15 minutes, because we are going to go in. Do we have to start this other one at?
At 6:00 or 5:30 or what?
At 6:00. Tell me how we have, because we have the enterprise fund draft, 18.
You'll need to start the other one.
We have 15 minutes. Okay, so I think the best thing to do is take the 15-minute break now. Start the council meeting.
We have a public hearing.
And come back.
Immediately following.
There's just no way in 15 minutes that Lori's going to be able to-
No, you haven't had a chance.
I hear, I hear you, Lori.
I submitted 56 of them.
I'm just afraid that the council-
One more item.
So you can start now.
Okay, so we don't, okay, so we can keep going then. All right. Okay, then she's going to be aboard. So we're going to go to 3.2, and the staff will provide information on the enterprise funds, draft FY18 budgets, and the 10-year capital improvement program, which is the CIP projects. Requests for the FY17 to FY18 carryovers will be presented.
Believe me, crazy.
I'm sorry.
Short break before we start this.
I'm sorry, what?
Short break.
Oh, can I just finish this first? Would you mind? I'm just giving a little description. Council, I do have some rights here, and we're reading what this is about. So would you just please hang back? I'm going to give you time. So we're going to start this explanation all over again, because there's people listening. We are on 3.2. Staff will provide information on the enterprise funds, draft FY18 budgets, and the 10-year capital improvement program. That's the CIP projects. Requests for the FY17 to FY18 carryovers will be presented. And council's discussion and feedback on the FY18 draft budget, CIP projects, and proposed carryovers will be requested and used to guide finalizing the tentative FY18 budget and the 18-27 10-year capital improvement program. Now, Lori Wingenroth, Budget and Research Manager, will present. But before she presents, we're going to take about a 10-minute break. So you have a 10-minute break, council.
Sorry, Lori.
We have rejoined the meeting, and we're going to make one other change. We're going to come back on the work session after the regular meeting. So I'm going to start the regular meeting, so. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda on Monday, April 10th. Please join Councilman, Councilmember Campbell in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation. I'm going to reconvene the work session, and we're on 3.2. The staff will provide information on the enterprise fund draft FY18 budget and the 10-year capital improvement program projects. Requests for FY17 to FY18 carryovers will also be presented. Council's discussion and feedback on the FY18 draft budget, CIP project, and proposed carryovers will be requested and used to guide the finalizing the tentative FY18 budget and the 18-27 10-year capital improvement plan. You're on, Lori. Thank you for waiting.
All righty.
Lori's Budget and Research Manager.
All righty. You gave me a chance by breaking before to answer the phone, and my daughter called to say she ran out of gas in a rental car.
Oh, my. I guess everything happens for a reason, doesn't it?
Yeah, I guess so. We're here today to start the first of two or three meetings to go over the draft budget. And so-
And so, the next step in the budget, this is the kind of the step in the budget process before we move into the final adoption steps. So today, we're just going to be covering the Enterprise Funds of sanitation, water, and wastewater. You're used to seeing the ballpark here as an enterprise fund. We're changing the classification of the ballpark fund to a special revenue fund. Essentially, the way we're going to approach the presentation tonight is a quick review of the forecast for the particular fund, talk a little bit about the base budgets. If there's CIP for the particular fund, we'll go over that. Then supplementals that are in the draft budget. The first, the information you're seeing today for the first time is the carryover requests, and then we'll close with the surface water project. So sanitation, we'll start with sanitation. The forecast for sanitation, we're not forecasting a need for rate increases in the current forecast. So the revenue is simply assuming 4% annual growth related to how our account growth has been in the past. Same thing about expenses, we're assuming a 4% account growth. We've also included inflation assumption of about 5% to cover things like compensation, the contracts increasing and those types of things. And when you see the forecast, you'll see where we've added in where there are fleet or IT replacements in those asset management plans. And just as we start to look at this forecast, you'll see a fund balance that's growing a little bit. Just want to remind you of some of the pressures that this fund may be facing in the future. If you'll remember, you funded in the current year a study to look at alternatives for delivering sanitation services. That's in anticipation of the current contract expiring for, the contained contract expiring, and actually, it's June 30th of 2019. And so that, that may present some different options for the fund. In addition, we talked a little bit when we talked about the supplemental request last time, that they are having some struggles keeping up with the uncontained service levels. So there may be some pressure as we move forward in the next few years to add some resources there or change those service levels. And then outside the five-year forecast, but something that we're taking into consideration in this forecast, is that just outside the forecast window, there's about $1.2 million in vehicle replacements planned, essentially mostly the backloaders or whatever. So here's your forecast. What we've shown are, you know, kind of the things we just went through, that line item called capital outlay, about 2/3 of the way down is where we're showing those fleet or technology replacements. We've held the transfers to the general fund for the services the general funds that provides constant. That's another potential change in the future as we move into doing a cost allocation study, hopefully next year. But as you see, as I mentioned, you'll see the fund balance is growing slightly there. And again, there'll be that 1.2 million that would hit shortly after the window there. And then if there is an increase associated with the uncontained, that would chip away at that fund balance as well. In terms of the base budget, if you'll recall, this year, the contract with waste management called for us to take responsibility for maintaining the containers. We did prepare a fairly conservative budget because we were inexperienced with that particular area. So just to give you kind of an update on what has happened with the container program, we set the base budget for this year at $489,000. Next year's base budget is recommended at $402,600. The primary difference there is when we prepared the estimates for the program, we assumed that when we went to pick up those cans that people call and say, hey, my can is broken, come give me a new one, we anticipated they would have trash in them, and they don't have trash in them, so we're not having the kinds of expenses we thought we would for disposing of that trash. So that's the main reason for the reduction there. And so as you see, with a $402,000 base budget for that program, just to give you an idea of how that compares to the cost experiences, or reduction that we experienced, in FY16, our actuals for the waste management contract were about $5 million. Today, we're estimating we'll spend about $4.5 million on that contract. The bulk of that change is due to us taking over the container. So our costs have not gone up quite as high as the cost reduction we experienced. In addition, because they did have those savings, the sanitation fund was able to absorb the increase in next year's waste management contract or the forecasted increase. That contract, by agreement, we have the rate increases based on an inflation factor and on a fuel cost factor. So the actual contract rates are only going to go up 0.3% next year, but we'll still have that 4% account growth. And so that was about $137,000 that we didn't need to request a supplemental for, that we were able to absorb as a result of those savings from taking over that container program. Next year, there's also $331,000 in fleet and IT replacements that have been included in the draft budget for the sanitation fund. And just so that after, even with absorbing that, the base budget was still down about $69,000 from where we started. In terms of supplementals, there is only one supplemental requested, and that is the additional grapple tractor and temporary labor, again, I mentioned earlier, to help them continue to maintain those service levels, both during times when staff may be off on leave or when equipment is going forward for maintenance. So just to kind of give you a picture of the total sanitation budget, the total budget of $7.6 million is what's proposed in the draft budget for next year. As you can see, the biggest chunk of that is $5.2 million in contractuals, of which most of that is related to the waste management contract. And then the other significant pieces are our own salary and benefits and the transfers to support the general fund for the costs such as accounting, HR, and those types of And then in addition, one of the items in your packet was a list of carryovers that have been requested. In the case of the sanitation fund, there's one carryover requested, and that's the $50,000 for the consultant study I just mentioned to look at alternatives for providing, how we can provide the service. That contract has been awarded, and work is just beginning on that study. Any questions on the sanitation fund?
Thank you. Questions? No questions?
All righty.
Thank you very much for that.
We'll move on to wastewater. So again, we'll start with the forecast. In the case of wastewater, you see, we're just going to give you a forecast through the current rate plan, we're not extending beyond there. So the revenue assumptions are those that are built into the rate plan in terms of changes in the rates and then account growth as well. Consistent with the other fund, we've assumed a 5% inflationary increase, included their fleet and IT forecasted replacements. In this fund, we mentioned when we talked before about CIP projects, there is, the rate plan includes $7.5 million in bond-funded projects. In this forecast, we are recommending that we use operating funds instead of bonds at this point in time for those projects and save that bonding capacity for future demands. And again, this fund you'll also see is growing a fund balance, and there is a significant future demand on this fund, which is full funding for the Goodyear Reclamation Facility's expansion. That is a project that's included in the impact fee program. However, because when you build it, you can't build it for today's needs, you have to build it for the needs of today and going forward, we won't have collected the impact fees, all of the impact fees necessary to build that plant. So at that point in time, similar to as we've discussed with the general fund projects, there is likely a need to have a loan or some financing associated with a portion of that project that can't be funded with impact fees at that time. So similar presentation with, with resources, with the assumptions that we've mentioned. You'll, we'll notice that the beginning balance in FY17 is higher than we forecasted. That's attributable to both savings and revenue increases last year. There was also a change in how we established the beginning balance with relationship to customer deposits that are on hand that were removed from that fund that really should have been split between the water and wastewater fund. And again, you'll see at the bottom line, we do have a growing fund balance, and I mentioned previously, one of the demands that will be pushing, you know, a need to use those resources moving forward. Sorry about that. In terms of the wastewater base budget, their base budget is at equal to last year to this year's base budget. I will note that as an example of some savings that they've had, they absorbed a $30,000 software for the pretreatment program in this year's budget rather than pursuing a supplemental to do that. They also had some operational changes that allowed them to have some savings in electricity from last year to this year, and that has allowed them to absorb some chemical increases and other types of increases in their base budget. And then next year's base budget, or next year's budget will also include $210,000 or $211,000 in fleet and IT replacements according to those plans. Wastewater supplementals, these are the same supplementals you saw when we made the presentation on March 20th. The only change is that I had failed to list the sampler replacement on the slide before, however, it was listed as a recommended supplemental in the materials that we provided. Just to clarify, the SCADA system engineer is split 50/50 between water and wastewater simply because that system services both of those operations, and so we're splitting the cost proportionately to that. And I'd like to also note that that position is going to be assigned to the Information Technology Department, so it'll be in addition to the IT department, but it will be funded by water and wastewater. In terms of the CIP, again, we are presenting the same CIP that was presented on March 20th. No changes have been made since that point in time. In comparison to the CIP, the currently adopted CIP, there are timing changes of projects. Inflation has been added to those impact fee projects that did not have inflation previously. And as I mentioned earlier, we're proposing the use of 7.5 million in operating funds instead of bond funds for those, a handful of the capital projects. Some of the major projects that are included in there are the, are an expansion of the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility, the Corget Expansion, and impact fee developer reimbursements for infrastructure that's already been installed, and for debt service for growth-related activities that are part of the impact fee program as well. And here's a look at the wastewater budget in its pieces. You'll see that debt service and the CIP are about a third each of the cost of that particular fund, and then the operating costs represent the other third. And so again, the new items here, and I need to apologize, I was focused on the operating budget, and in the slides, I haven't summarized the non-operating funded carryovers, so I'll tell you about those as well. But essentially, these are the carryovers of items that were budgeted this year that will either have to continue into next year or have not been awarded. So on the operating side, there's about, and this is in their operating budget, there's about $200,000 in items, that, one of them being a vehicle, another significant one being the interconnection of wastewater facilities to SCADA. The work, the study for that SCADA work was finished in November, and they're moving forward with the, with the work to actually perform the connections. In terms of the CIP, there's a few projects listed there. In the impact fees, there's also a carryover of 16, 6.9 million dollars to go along with that 1.2 million for work that's being done at the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility. That's it on wastewater. Have any questions?
Thank you. Questions? No, I think that's it. Thank you very much, Lori.
All righty.
So I think we've gotten all the information items and the others.
We have, we still have water to go, and unfortunately, water's more complex. So I'll do this part of water.
Didn't want to hear that.
And then Doug will join us and do the surface water part of water as well.
Yeah. All right, you got it.
Sorry. All right, the water-based budget, $8.5 million. And again, they have absorbed some, some cost increases in areas such as utilities, chemicals, the credit card fees that are charged when people charge their bills, and they have almost $300,000 in fleet replacements in next year's base budget. Again, same supplementals that you saw previously, no changes from the materials that were presented last time. There is a, there was one inconsistency where, again, the compliance scheduling software was listed on one place and not on the other, but it was included in the numbers you reviewed previously. And I'll mention on the CIP-related items, as we're, as we talk about the surface water project, you may recall, we talked about the use of long-term storage credits as one way to fund that project. We've left the increase related to purchasing CIP water here as a supplemental. If that is a way that we fund the project, those dollars that are sitting in the operating budget to purchase CIP water will be used in the project instead of buying more long-term CIP is the same CIP represented in March. And again, it had substantial changes from the prior, from the currently adopted CIP due to the plans to do the surface water project. Many projects were removed from that CIP, with the plan being that some of those projects will, those projects will no longer be required, and the funding sources that would have been used for those, such as the Southern Solution impact fees, will be reprogrammed to pay for the surface water plant, and we'll go through whatever steps are necessary to make those changes to the impact fee program. And then there was timing changes. The major, the two major changes or new projects were adding another potable water interconnect with Avondale and Phoenix. And then there was an increase in the CIP capital charges line item, and again, that's because of cost increases they're experiencing. So major projects essentially are the surface water project, some wells, and some developer reimbursements for infrastructure that has already been installed. Here's a look at the water budget in its pieces. About a third of it is again, debt service, or debt service payments. Operating capital in the CIP make up about another third of that, and then their operating costs compose the balance. The requested carryovers for the water depart, or the water fund, again, is about $200,000 in their operating funds, the most significant being the funding for reverse osmosis membrane replacement. That's a program where we are carrying over funds from year to year. Some of those replacements are very expensive, so they're trying to keep, get to up to $250, $1,000 in that line item. In addition, what I didn't list on the slide were some carryovers in the non-operating funds in the CIP, 2.8 million for the Adamant Well, that's a developer-funded project, about 1.8 million in four different bond-funded projects, and about 2.1 million in impact fees for the Site 12 booster. So if you want, if you have questions about this portion, I can answer them, and then we can have Doug carry this, cover surface water.
Well, I just noticed that on the previous slide, your pie, the breakdown, I was just surprised to see drought contingency still on there because I don't think that that's going to be moving forward, so at least at this time. And maybe you're just still using the same slide from previous.
It's my understanding that there's a meeting, I think later this week, to discuss that further. For now, we're leaving it in there, we're treating it as a contingency. So either tentative, if we have definitive answers, we'll take it out, or we'll leave it in as a contingency, it won't be able to be touched without council action on that item.
Well, and I still question this, if the conversations ended with the CIP issue either and what they're doing with fees, so not really sure on that. It may go from one area to the next. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. Okay, thank you. That was all.
Yeah. Councilwoman Pizzillo.
Is this the appropriate place to talk about the $7.5 million GO bond to pay for, what's being paid for by property taxes, or is this, is this fine to do it here?
I would wait till the next section because Doug will walk through the funding of the surface water project, and that's where that item is being raised.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Lori said, I'm here to talk about the surface water treatment plant, go through it in a little more depth than what we have before as far as the financing, the impact to the rates and so on, at least what we're seeing at this point in time. To reiterate what you have seen before, on our funding goals overall, no modifications to the current adopted rate plan, and I want to emphasize that's the current adopted rate plan, which is through 2020. We wanted to make sure we were not going to make any adjustments to that. Minimizing the long-term rate to the ratepayers, recognizing that surface water is an economic development necessity, so therefore has a citywide impact. We're going to allocate costs equitably between new growth and current users and protect the city from development fluctuations because we do have impact fees in here. We're going to make sure that we have conservative projections on that and can handle it within the rates if development doesn't happen, and then if the development does happen, that we have a mechanism to prepay some of that debt service. Funding for this $114.2 million, same slide you've seen before. One of the items we will not talk much about is that $32 million Newland contribution because that is 32 million coming from Newland. Impact fees from their development area, we'll go right back to them, so that's the entire extent of the financial impact of that, that their development fees go to repay them until that 32 million is paid off. The remainder of the project, the $82.2 million, will come from a couple of sources. Cash on hand will make a big, a big portion of that, about $4 million from cap savings and an additional $6 million from development impact fees in the central service area, so about 10 million will come from cash on hand. We'll be borrowing the rest of those funds. What I'll be going through as we go through this is how are we going to pay for that, the borrowing that goes along with that? The table that you see before you right now is straight out of our existing rate study. The existing rate study, although council adopted for the five-year forecast of it through 2020, it actually did a forecast through 2025, so it looked at a 10-year horizon. So when we look at that 10-year horizon, what you have after 2020 are some assumptions of a 3.34% customer growth rate, a 3.5% volume growth rate, because water is paid for by a base rate as well as a usage rate. Expenditure growth of 3% to 6%, in that there are rate increases factored into every single fiscal year after 2020 in the current proposed rate study. That is, without a surface water treatment plant, we would have been seeing rate increases. So that's what are the baseline that we were looking at is what was it without the surface water treatment plant? So then what we're going to have when we go into a new surface water treatment plant, there's going to be new costs associated with that. Those new costs are going to be three specific areas. Debt service, we've got it estimated at a $7.5 million GO bond, and a $78 million revenue bond. Transportation, that's how do we access the water? We've got the connection to this Salt River project. We have to pay to transport that water over to the salt, to our water treatment plant, and that's involved in there as well as a use charge of that Salt River project water. Operational then, once you build a plant for $114 million, there's going to be operational costs associated with that. The plant operations, we're going to try to do as much transfer of expenses in use of groundwater over to surface water, but it's not going to be a one-to-one ratio, so there are going to be increased costs associated with operations, and we'll go through a little bit on what we're projecting that those will look like. Going to that first area, the first area is debt service. Debt service will be composed of a $7.5 million general obligation bond that is set up to be a 20-year bond. It's going to be using the last of the voter-authorized water debt. The tax rate impact on that will be about 4 cents in year one, and this is the property tax, so this will be citywide for both the north and south sections of the city, so whether you're in the water district or not, this is a general obligation bond of the 7.5 million. The remaining, the revenue bond, will be a 30-year debt service. It will be paid for out of impact fees, 50% of the cap fee, which was put in place with the 2015 study for the acquisition of cap water, and then utility rates will make up the rest of where that water, where that funding will come from. Debt service on the GO bond is approximately $600,000 annually over that 20-year period. On the revenue bond for 30 years, the first 20 years have debt service of 3.5 to 5.5 million. The last 10 years increases to 7.5 to 8.5 million, and the main reason for that is because we do have some conservative forecasts in there on the impact fees that if growth happens quicker, we'll be able to pay down those end portions sooner. The second area is transportation. These are numbers that are straight out of the SRP agreement that was adopted by council. We have a lease fee, which is basically the access to the system. That's based on 25,000 acre feet. That's a fee that we'll pay flat every year for the duration of our contract with SRP, which is 99 years. The administrative fee is $2,500, and that's per access point. At this current, at the current point of design, we assume there's going to be one access point into the SRP canal. If there's more, it'll be an additional administrative fee for those access points. And then the final is the transportation fee. That is on a per acre foot basis, so $59 per acre foot. That will come out to about $1 million annually for the 8MGD surface water treatment plant to bring that surface water to the project, and that assumes a 4% annual growth rate in the overall volume. And then the last area of cost increases will be operations. The surface water treatment plant, what we did for that was we based a lot of the information we have on the Oasis Water Treatment Facility in Glendale. It's a treatment facility about the same size, which is 8MGD. They actually have a little bit less volume that goes through it than what we would anticipate, so we made some adjustments from that. Staffing, we're estimating approximately seven full-time equivalent positions. There will be some shift of resources from current groundwater well maintenance and so on to the surface water treatment plant, but not 100%. And to be conservative, we've forecasted that the majority of these will be brand-new positions. The cost to treat surface water is less than groundwater. Groundwater requires brine removal. There's a 17% water loss in that process. There is a huge shift over to wastewater from some of the byproducts of that. A lot of that will go away with surface water treatment plant. To the extent that it will go away, we don't know right now, but there, it's going to be cheaper to operate. So we do have a forecast in here of approximately $700,000 of increased operational costs associated with the surface water treatment plant. And then that last bullet point, wastewater impacts have not been accounted for. As I said, through the brine removal process, a lot of stuff is sent over to the wastewater treatment plant. That's going to have an impact on how the wastewater treatment plant operates, and that'll be assessed as we move forward with the surface water treatment plant. And then when we go into a full-fledged rate study, we'll be able to look at both water and wastewater together to see what the impacts will be. So that is the overview of the new expenditures that were coming into play that were not accounted for in the original study. What also has not been accounted for was some of the financing that's going to go along to pay for those. And the financing are really four different sources. Impact fees, the cap water charge, the GO bond property tax, and then the final would be an additional utility rate increase to pay for the difference. Impact fees, as Lori has mentioned, and we've mentioned before, there will be a rescoping of all the projects within the IIP that were groundwater that will no longer be needed. The impact fees, what we did in our projection of impact fees is we've accounted for potential inconsistencies of collections. The impact, the IIP study, we've taken down to 66% of what the growth projections were in there. So it's a relatively conservative estimate of what the growth rates will be that tracks pretty closely with what we're actually have been experiencing the last couple of years. If growth accelerates, we have the ability to prepay. If growth stays at that realistic estimate, the utility rates are going to be able to forecast it. And when we go into the full rate study right before 2020, we'll be able to factor in a little bit more contingencies if we feel that that is necessary as a buffer. And as I said earlier, the Southern Solutions will also be rescoped in the impact fee study. The cap water charge was put in place in 2015 to help pay for the costs associated with the acquisition and recharge of surface water. We're currently using this to purchase cap water and recharge it and build up our long-term storage credits. We currently have long-term storage credits of approximately 90,000 acre feet. What we are proposing here is that for the next couple of years, we would not be making the cap water purchase, which is about $2 million annually, so we can have some cash on hand for the construction of the surface water treatment plant. And then we will, for the remainder of the term of the debt service, use 50% of those collections to pay for debt service. What that does is over a 10-year period, we would draw down our long-term storage bank by approximately 20%. After that 10-year mark with the growth projected, we would start building back into that long-term storage. So it's just the temporary dip into that. The third mechanism on the financing is the GO bond property tax. This is the existing $7.5 million of voter authorization. It would take the last of the water, wastewater authorization, voter authorized tax. The average tax rate over that first five years would be just a little over 5 cents per $100 of assessed valuation on a $200,000 home, about $11.22. As the assessed valuation grows, that number as a proportion in the impact of the rate And then finally, after you add up all of those, the difference is going to have to be made up with utility rates. And as we said, there would be no change to the adopted utility rates through 1120, utilizing that 10-year model with the surface treatment plant. So what the current 10-year model showed was annual increases after 2020 of about 2.6%. Once we add the surface water treatment plan in with the other funding sources, we'll need a minimum additional increase of about 2.6%. So approximately 5.2% total increase once the surface water treatment plan is in. I've got the word minimum folded in there because what I did, and I'll show you on the next slide that we go through here, is for the surplus and deficit, I took the minimum rate increase to keep this number positive throughout the entire thing. So with, this does not forecast any kind of building up of a fund balance, operational reserves, anything, just what a minimum increase would need. So that's why I have the word minimum right there. And again, a full rate study will be required to refine. We would be doing, going into a full rate study late 2018, early 2019, with or without the surface water treatment plant, because our rates are through 2020. So this would evaluate that into a full study on both the water as well as the wastewater side. So getting back to that table we saw earlier that was out of the water rate study that we had before, same numbers up here. When we add in the debt service costs each of the years, debt service would begin in 2020. This is assuming that we take all the debt at one time. In actuality, we would parcel it off as we actually needed it, so that would have a little bit of a conservative factor into it. Transportation costs, assuming that the wastewater treat, or the water treatment plant comes online in 2021, those costs would begin in fiscal year 2022. Incremental operating costs, that's just the impact of each rate increase each year, so that's the impact of the rate increase. So that gets to our total costs, and then we have our revenue side. On the revenue side, debt service, about $1.8 million annually. The cap charge, 1.6 to 1.7 million annually. GO for debt service, as I'd stated earlier, about 600,000. The difference in that is what is the cost going to be for that rate increase? That, that is where we come up with that estimate of 2.6%. And again, that's just to get us above zero, so a lot more has to go into that piece of it. But it puts it into the frame of reference that with the information we know today, what we would be looking at with the surface water treatment plant is rate increases of approximately 5.2%. Definitely, once we get into this, we're going to see rate increases that'll be less than that 10% mark that we've been experiencing the last few years. So this is the model that we've went through to look at to see how we would be able to afford the surface water treatment plant, and specifically, how we would go through those items. So with that, do we have any questions?
Questions? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
If you would, go back to the one on the property tax slide, please. I think it goes back, where is it? There it is. You know, I remember back in 10, when we finally got the subsidy off the enterprise fund, and I think in 10, it was about 1.5 million, and then 11 was the second piece with another 1.6 or 1.7 million, so that the enterprise fund was covering its own cost. And I, it's been a policy in place for six years or so. And the problem I have with putting the utility costs for the surface water on the property tax, even though I agree it's a, it's a nominal amount, it's a policy issue. Policy issue that said that enterprise would cover itself, growth pays for itself. And the fact that here we have customers north of 10 that is subsidizing our water. And as far as I'm concerned, there's other options other than paying that debt service with property tax. So I have a philosophical problem with putting it on property tax. Now, I know I'm in the minority probably on here because of the minimal impact, but I go back to the original in 10 and 11 when we actually went with the policy of enterprise covering its own costs. And the fact that you have it on the property tax assessment, no matter how small it is, we've just broke that policy. And as you go down that slope, I assume down the road as we get more, you know, GO bonds, there's nothing saying that once we've agreed that the enterprise fund no longer covers its costs because the property tax is covering everybody, then what's to stop us down the road from adding more debt service on that as we get more approval? So again, philosophically, that's where I'm coming from. That's why I'm against putting the property tax to pay for that 7.5. And again, we've had the discussion. I just want to make sure I'm on the record opposing it. That's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stip?
Doug, sorry. Doug, thank you for figuring out how we're gonna, how we're gonna pay for this. When we first talked about the surface treatment or the surface water movement and whatnot, the number's pretty large, and it is one of those things that I think we, you look at and say, holy smokes, how are we going to do this? So the fact that we're here today talking about how we can actually do it is, is pretty impressive, so thank you for that. It was my suggestion to move this to the property tax and a portion of it, and it was not, not done out of any other reason other than water is a, it's a value to the entire city. And, and I appreciate the fact that this is only 7.5 million out of 100 and...
114.2.
Yeah, out of 114, so. And I can definitely appreciate Councilmember Pizzillo's, you know, concern about, is this the first of many strokes that take us farther and farther away from, from where we were at? But I think if we start looking at how, what are, what are our other options? We take it out of sales tax, that hurts every resident as well. If we take it from our current, any one of our current existing revenues, that takes it away from everybody else in the city. And right now, I'm, quite honestly, I'm concerned about the rate that we pay in our water system. Our rates are pretty high, particularly, particularly compared to Liberty. And I think we compare ourselves to Liberty because that's the part that serves north of I-10. And I'm, and as I'm saying that, I would be very curious to know what are the Buckeye rates, what are the Avondale rates? Because we can, we can constantly put ourselves up against Liberty, but I would be curious what the other, what the other water... But I would be curious what the other, what the other water rates are. I know when we talk about the cost of cap water and the cost to an Arizona city, we pay far less per acre foot for water in the state of Arizona than they do in Nevada and California. So, you know, I think we need to take all, all of that into consideration. And, you know, we've, we've often said that growth pays for itself, but I think we've found in the last four or five years that growth doesn't actually pay for itself. And we're, we're experiencing that with the attack on impact fees that the state legislature is allowing to continue to be eroded, where growth isn't paying for itself. So now we've got to come up with ways to, to do that. And as I said a couple of weeks or months ago, if we let the, the Goodyear Water Company, if you will, fail, or we let the southern part of our city reach its maximum capacity with the current water that we have, and we don't continue to develop, the entire city is going to suffer. So I'm obviously very much in support of the seven and a half million, especially the $11.22, and I think that's, that's a pretty good win.
Just to comment to Bill, I know that Liberty is under a rate increase. They're going before the commission, so to get the figures that, you know, you were talking about, I think we need to wait and, because they haven't had a rate increase in quite a while again. You know, they haven't, they haven't been as direct as we have been about the cost of water, so.
Right. And that information was provided to us in the supplemental follow-ups.
Right, right.
So yeah, assuming that there'll be another rate increase, but just to hear, just to get the, the stats from Buckeye and Avondale is more of a curiosity thing. It doesn't change my position at all.
All right. Councilman Laura Towne, Vice Mayor Laura Towne.
I, I understand where Councilmember Pizzillo is coming from, because we do want to try to make sure that growth pays for growth. I think, though, I look at this as not a user water system, but more as an economic development and an infrastructure project that actually benefits the entire city. Because, to be blunt, if we don't get our hands around this whole water issue and we don't actually have that 100-year water supply, we will not have growth, we will not have new businesses, we will not have new retail, we will not have new residents, and we need the residents in order to get all that retail. It's kind of this intertwined net. If we don't get more residents, more density, and the only place to build that density is south of the freeway for the whole city. The mall will go north of the freeway, but to get the mall north of the freeway into that resident, we got to get the residents south of the freeway because it's in that kind of that cone that they're looking at to get the people there for economic development. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Stip. Now, I know we also talked about a possibility of using some of the contingency, drawing down that to maybe make it a little lower rate. I don't know if that's still something we're thinking about possibly, but if there's any other way we can kind of bring it down a little bit, some other money or funds that we might have extra to bring that 7.5 down, I, I would be for that. But I, I think this is, I look at it as an infrastructure. Because we live in the desert, you have to have water to grow the city. And I also want it to be quite clear that if, if you look there, the Southern Solutions is being replaced, so the people know up in Australia, Newland's putting about $32 million here. Sometimes I don't hear a lot from Australia, well, Newland doesn't do anything. They are putting $32 million so that you can have water and we can grow our community. So I think that's a big chunk that we need to let people know that it's out there. And this is another great partnership, just like the fire station. This is a partnership with our developers as well, and I think that's really important. So I would support this.
Councilman Osborne?
Sure. You know, I think something that, that is also to be considered is that this is a quality change. I mean, this will be, as we've heard, that this water is going to actually be better water than...
Less treatment.
Absolutely. And so I view that as, as a full-city win for that. I also think that this is, that 7.5 million really is a proportionate share that, that the North is doing. And because philosophically, this is back to one water and it's all of ours together. And, and I was definitely on this council when the argument was, North was paying for so much of that enterprise. And so I thoroughly respect where we were to where we are now and not wanting to go back to, to Joe's point. And the policy's not going away. Just because we're making this minor dip into it, it doesn't mean that it doesn't still stand, like we're wiping that policy away. Because I still think that, you know, the South needs to pay for its own water. But I think this is something that, you know, we were not foreseeing three years ago, five years ago. This is something that was extremely important to our city and to its future, and, and that kind of changes the ball, the ball plan, and so the ballgame. And, and I, I think that's something that a council has to look at. Just because a policy is in place doesn't always mean that every single time it makes sense. And so I, I think we have to bend the rule on this one. I mean, we always say Enterprise, Enterprise things have to pay for itself. Well, we know how the ballpark stands. So I'm for it. I, I do question one item, and you went into those found fees that we didn't know, you know, a month ago, whatever, that you just added into it a couple of slides back. Oh, you guys were just discovering. What, what does that mean towards, keep going back, I think, or was this, you found some charges you didn't know you were going to necessarily have? Anyway, what is, what does that mean to the actual utility bill itself? When we're, so you were saying 5.2% is what you believe the, the household is going to see to their increase of their utility bill? But we're not talking until 2021, 2022.
Correct, correct. It would be, 5.2% would be the total increase that we would estimate, so some, somewhere between 5.2 and a little higher, less than 10% at the end of the day. And that would be just the water side only, not looking at the wastewater. And what that is, is taking what all the study, what was in the rate impact, the rate study that was done in 2015, the account growth, just debt service, all the infrastructure repairs and so on that would have been needed just to maintain our current system, adding surface water treatment right on top of that.
So when you say 5.2% in 2020?
Correct.
Is that then followed by 2021, an additional how much?
Five point, it's estimating it just, at this point, just 5.2% per year is what we're looking at right here.
Per year?
Per year from 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024...
You're saying, you're saying a 30% increase in five years?
Correct.
Wow. Okay.
One of the, over the last few years, we've been having nearly a 10% increase each year. So that's taken our annual 10% increases and actually cutting it down from that.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Well, I think Joe should be respected for reminding us that we do have a policy in the old saying, rules are meant to be broken, kind of thing. But I think along with that, you have to use your common sense, and you have to be respectful of, of what will cause the least pain to the most people. And I, I absolutely agree that water is a all-city issue, and that these steps we're taking are very proactive and make a whole lot of sense when you, when, when you actually listen to the report and what it means to our community. So I, I too, while respecting the reminder, and think that that should come up again if, if it, if there's an issue similar to this. But I think we have to be respectful and look things pragmatically and what makes good business sense.
Thank you for talking about respectful. I should be respectful of each other's knowledge of the issue. But we thought about the policy of water that we're going to be getting from Australia compared to what they have been getting? That's definitely going to change. And I do believe water is, should be looked at as the city as a whole and not two areas that are connected by a bridge. We're, we're one, and we've hit, we've hit a part, a time in our council that water has become more prominent than before, when we first became part of this council. So I think that it's an expression, growth pays for growth. I think it's overused. I don't think it, when you use that statement, that you can dissect it and solve a problem with growth pays for growth. Sometimes it doesn't pay for itself. And I think we should be careful how we use that statement. And the other thing we talked about, and some of us were against it, some are for it, is flexibility. And if this isn't one place that we need to be a little bit more flexible on. We need to respect the public and honor them knowing and responding to them because they are going to pay for this. And we have to be just blunt with them and face this right from the beginning. And if you're going to spend time trying to save their money, bits and pieces here and there, if you're going to do it, it better be, it better be in, it better give the results of a water solution. So I think that we have, I think you've got to be hesitant about that. And I think by having the water committee that we have, this is a good time to use them. You know, make sure they understand this, and let them go out and help be the ambassadors for us. And we should be out there more often on this, too. So I congratulate you on, because I could not see how we were going to do all this. I could not vision that. Could you when you were talking about this? And Bill, thank you for your comments because it was so true. I mean, I just couldn't visualize it. I kept thinking, how are we going to do this with all the other things in infrastructure and the Goodyear that we have to do? So compliments to you, really, and to the staff for coming up for this, and, and...
Maybe somebody will still throw money to us.
Yeah, that's right. Maybe, maybe something's gonna...
Somebody.
Maybe it's going to rain dollar bills. I don't know.
You never know.
I have no idea. But at the point we're now at, and I, I do want to commend Newland for coming to the table on that 32 million. And, and I want to, I want to be sure the people that are here that are from Australia will take the time to say thank you to Newland. I think so many times, because we get this in Pebble Creek about Robeson, and immediately when they have, and they go after them and what bad people they are and how they don't care about anything, but look around your communities. Look what they've built. Look at the quality of life you have up there. And I look at that the same with Pebble Creek. How could, I mean, I never expected to live in such a wonderful area. And so you need to tell your people up there, there are people too, but you're living daily with them, to start appreciating what they have up there. So anyway, that's my comment so far. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. So great presentation and great discussion. All right. The only thing that we did not ask on the last one, is there anything the council wants to be put back on, on a future agenda? We didn't do that in the regular meeting, so. Anything?
Not offhand.
You already had one thing, so I think you already ported that. But we didn't, I didn't ask the question of the other ones. Okay. All set? All right, meeting adjourned.